I am calling this meeting of the school committee to order. And I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And I'll ask you to join me as speaker. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to go into executive session for the purpose of ratifying a contract with the absentee B group as well as discussing district-wide negotiations. So do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Chairman of the vote?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Ms. Jacob?
Yes.
Ms. Flavassa?
Yes.
And Mr. Brooks?
Yes. Okay, we will reconvene to continue our meeting for the completion of the agenda. I suspect it'll be about a half an hour. Okay? Question? And we're going to move on in the agenda. Oral communications, if there are anybody here who'd like to address the school name subject. Seeing none, we'll move on to recognitions. It's early, but I would just like to recognize the event earlier this evening, the countdown to kindergarten, which was supported by many different local groups, including the Gloucester Education Foundation, Wellspring, the reading group, who else was there? Open Door was there.
YMCA.
YMCA was there. The Badger Girls were there. And it was very well attended and very exciting. Are there any other recognitions?
I was told that the cheerleaders were out cleaning up the city of Gloucester recently. I just want to commend them for that. I think it's great to see our students out there before school starts doing community activism.
Great.
O'Malley Innovation Middle School, Youth Theatre Summer Academy, had a musical theatre camp performance. I'm not sure who was able to see that. I think superintendent may talk about it in the report, but it was quite a show with 108 students performing on the stage or near the stage, as close as it could get over at Gloucester High School. It was really impressive, a lot of fun performance. It was comfortable because it was air-conditioned. And they didn't have amplification, but they were quite smart about it in that for the musical numbers, they would have a group of kids on this side of the back and a group on this side of the back so that those of us who were sitting in the back would hear the music as well as the people in front. Good thinking of them.
They always do a good job. They always do a good job. Any other recognitions? Seeing none. The consent agenda, do we have any items on the consent agenda that need to be removed or would like to be discussed further?
Do we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And that brings us to deliberations on education issue. So we have our new athletic director, Brian Laffada, here, who is going to update us on scheduling for fall sports.
Well, you've said it, I can introduce Brian, but he officially came on board July 1st.
July 1st.
And he has been at it since. Great background, has been a general manager for a North Shore baseball league, has been our varsity baseball coach for...
Five years.
For four years. Great reputation within the building, great reputation out in the community, a real go-getter, if I may say that. And he's said the ground running in a fantastic way. Perhaps say a little bit about your beginnings, but I'm sure that the school committee is interested in our fall schedule and instructions on that.
Yep. It's been an exciting month and a half already to get started since July 1st. Tomorrow officially is the first full day of fall sports. We've got over 250 athletes registered right now, seven different sports, 18 different levels, so all the coaches, I just left a coaches' meeting, they're all excited to get started. Thankfully, the rain washed away things done today and we'll get more looking clear for the rest of the week. Other than that, myself getting acclimated, getting to know who everybody is in the system, learning the MIAA rules, regulations, everything that needs to be done. So it's been fun for me. It's a new career and I'm looking forward to it. Obviously, there are hot topics. Our stadium is obviously one of the big ones right now. Everyone, a few weeks ago when they pulled out our bleachers and ripped up some of the track, I've been in communication with the DPW as much as possible and they've been working directly with the contractor, the general contractor overseeing the whole project. As of right now, our first official larger game right now, September 7th football plays. And at that point, bleachers probably will not be ready for that, but we're already working on a contingency plan of portable bleachers or potential options of bringing some ropes with as parts of the track that the fans could stand, but also have portable bleachers, obviously for handicaps accessible or anything of that sort. So we are working on that. After that September 7th game, we do have three weeks off from football. They're on the road the whole time, so we have time to get that up. Our other sports, field hockey, boys soccer, girls soccer, that also utilize it, will still have the portable stands to get those. Obviously, those crowds aren't quite as large, and I would like to get them that way, but there will be enough space to be able to hold them. As far as the bathrooms are working there, the electricity tomorrow morning, fingers crossed, will be getting turned on by National Grid. We should be pretty good to go with that. That's pretty much everything I've got as far as the overview on the stadium right now. Plans and questions?
Concession stand, is that the...
Concession stand, yep. The football boosters have really spearheaded cleaning it up and everything and just waiting now is more on the electricity. They were, as far as I know, there were two coolers in there that were previously donated that unfortunately are no good now because of the flooding, but they have already gotten one in and working on another. They've gotten a donation of a stove and they had to replace that, so they look like they're well on their way. But like I said, as soon as we get the electricity on, they'll be a lot closer. And they've cleaned it up well. I've been in there a couple times now with football starting a few days earlier than all other sports due to MIAA regulations. They've been in there cleaning up even more, so should be ready to go.
How are the numbers sports?
Sports-wise?
Yep.
As of right now, up to the minute when I was sitting up there, we're about 250 registered. I know tomorrow there'll be the stragglers that come in that didn't pre-register and will show up, so we're anticipating 260 to 270, like I said, for the seven sports we offer. It might be slightly down a little bit from last year, the last registration, but I don't know the exact numbers because a lot of those kids may have duplicate registrants. We're just under 300, but certain sports, field hockey, one of them, numbers are going up. Surprisingly, football, which is good, is going up considering reports around the state that they're going down. Last year, I know they had to shrink down to a varsity in kind of a JV team, not three levels. We anticipate now having three levels for that. And like I said, field hockey's growing, we're increasing to four different levels for that. O'Malley freshman JV and varsity, so that's going well. So overall, the numbers might be slightly down, but we'll know more in the next week. With the holiday falling a little later this year, I don't know if it helps sports because usually kids will get to school, realize, oh, I should have already registered. But this is going to be a little bit longer than it might be, a little bit more of a late start for some of the, especially younger, the freshman or middle schoolers that take a major field hockey or middle school across country. We might start getting some more late registrants for that, so we'll see.
Okay, great. Next question. It's not towards fall, it's more like towards sports. Can you give me a staff's update on the girls' hockey, like what teams they have in this year?
Yep, as of now, obviously there was developments before I stepped in, but we're going to be going with the JV team.
Okay.
That's been communicated up front. Number one reason is safety-wise for the student athletes who are just the overall, looking at the skill level, the talent level and everything, compete at a varsity level would be endangering some of the girls. So many sports have been like that before then we got to start there, even though they were doing it for two years. It might be another couple, we're not going to put an exact timeframe on how soon they'll do it, but we'll play it by year and see how the feeder system is. KPN Youth Hockey has a very strong girls' youth program now, so the future's looking very good, but we don't need to rush right into that varsity. We did post a position to, out there as a JV job with the potential in their future to be migrating to a varsity type of position, hoping to obviously get the best type of candidate applying. We did get several candidates and I'll be putting together a search committee, I mean a selection committee, interview committee in the next couple of weeks. Once I kind of get through the fall season up and running, make sure we have a good committee to choose that, we'll go from there.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just want to make a remark. Well, first of all, welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
We have Bradley, whoa, LaHawn Warren's brother, Life Times Technology, Lifewear, donated wonderful stuff to the city of Gloucester as far as like tape for hockey and wristbands, any, let's hope no one gets injured, but any injury that you might have, he donated to Palace and Palace. And we went together with the Veterans Office, with the new director, to get this stuff to, you know, make sure that we had enough for our schools and what wasn't left, we'll send for Operation Troops. But he's hardly thinking about saving money, so it was great too, because you know what? Instead of buying it when you need it, they have it all on stock, so we already have that on stock, all the stuff that, you know, football, you know, kids might need, we have. So first of all, I want to thank Bradley from Lifewear Technologies and thank you so much, but also thank you for stepping up and saying, yes, you know, we can use it. So somebody's saving us money, people. That's what we need to do, save, save, save.
I just wanted to make a comment to thank you for the all-athlete parent meeting the other night. I know we've done a couple of sports at middle school and I don't know if that's been a regular routine at the high school, but I think it was good to have all the kids there and all the parents. The way you spoke about, you know, having pride and you're representing the city and, you know, not just your school.
That's definitely a big goal of myself and the whole department, all of our coaches. Just working in the entire North Shore area, the amount of high schools that I know generally trying to do that, bring everyone together as a community, I wanted to start doing that with a whole program instead of thinking of seven or eight different sports. And getting, and also getting the parents acclimated to their coaches, because from that meeting, obviously, they broke off to their individual sports. Just trying, parents and families have so much in the law nowadays that we try and answer as many questions up front, make life easy for them, so it's not a constant everyday battle, what time's practice, where's the game, how do this? And that's something else I'm working on now, because we did set up social media for the athletic department to try and promote our student athletes more, what they're doing, not only, like you said, on the fields and on the courts and everything, but academically, in the community, and things like that. And we're setting up a new website to make it more attractive, one stop, so people know this is where I get any Gloucester fishing and athletics schedule, this is where I need to be in SMAS. So that's another high priority right now, to try and simplify things and get everyone on the same page.
Brian, I just thought of something. Do you do any work or do the coaches do any work to look for grant money for sports? And I'm going to give you an example that I was aware of on another school committee that I sit on. Last year, like Mass General donated helmets, these new high-intents helmets to certain communities, but you had to search for that grant to get that. So I know you knew.
Right.
Only been here a month, but is that in your thoughts anyway or are coaches...
It definitely is something that we'd be obviously be open to and start researching, especially specifics. I do know, like our current football helmets were a donation multiple years ago.
Okay.
Each year, they have to go get recertified and follow concussion protocol, but they were helmets that I'm not sure exactly which medical institution donated those, but they donated those to seven schools in the area. So yeah, we're definitely open to that. And that's where I've been meeting so far with all of my fall coaches, I've met with them obviously first, starting to get into like winter coaches, getting to introduce myself to them, understand their sports, how everything works or their programs. And that's where I'll have occasional meetings with them and start looking. Once, I want to see, what else do you need and everything like that, and so I'm going to come just from this basic one, if we got to find other resources, other ways, so that will be definitely something we'll look into.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much and good luck this year. And hopefully the stadium will be finished soon.
Finished and done right.
Finished and done right.
Thank you.
They'll be out there on, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And we'll move on to school opening enrollment numbers. There's a handout I believe that everybody has.
All righty, thank you. Yes, you have a spreadsheet that shows that as of August 17th, there are 2,896 students who are enrolled, but the registrations, particularly for kindergarten, coming in over the last couple of days since then, but you know, we'll be in that general vicinity. You also have listings of the enrollments going into each of the schools at the start of school. If you be looking down the columns, Gloucester High School right now has an enrollment of 822, which is an increase of 24 students from last year. O'Malley is at 663, it's seven shy of last year's starting, or the October 1 enrollment, I should say. Last year's is based upon October 1 enrollment. Beeman is at 327, their October enrollment was 339. East Gloucester, 208, and their October 1 enrollment was 215. Plum Cove was 212 this year and 212 as of October 1 last year. Veterans is at 216, last year's October 1 was 207. West Parish is at 347 right now, 357 as of October last year. And the preschool is at 101, and they were at 107 at this time last year. So the numbers total are about the same and some fluctuations, but single digits, I guess the only significant perhaps number is the 24 added to the high school's enrollment this time. In terms of kindergarten, I think you have that maybe the third page, I'm not sure. Right now, or as of, or as of the 23rd, no. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, that's wrong, that's last year. Also, they're about 215, but again, there have been some registrations coming in over the last couple of days, I wouldn't be surprised if that's close to 20 at this point. Okay? So it's par with what we've seen over the last couple of years. I should, if with Mr. Brooks's permission, just make some mention of preschool.
There it is.
Is that right?
It's a B and F.
And there are some...
Why do you need permission?
I'm sorry?
It was a B and F, it's part of a B and F report.
Yeah, pardon me. There are some concerns, good problem, but there is an anticipation that it's getting crowded and that there could even be the possibility of need for a classroom come January, maybe even sooner. Our substantially separate classes right now are at the legal maximum, and you can, if there's more than the legal maximum, you can apply for a waiver in the short term as long as the department can demonstrate that we can meet the needs and service the children, the department that is willing to grant a waiver. But depending upon the waiver will determine whether or not we need to create another classroom in our substantially separate in particular. Last year at this time, there were 51 special education kids in the preschool. By the end of the year, there were 84, with a total enrollment close to 130. The graduating class that is going into kindergarten this year is low, it's only about 21 students, and on average, they usually are sending close to 35 to 40 students. So that means we've got a little bit more of a crunch. And we're, last year at this time, we started with 51 special education students. This year, we'll be starting with 73. And there are seven eligibility meetings scheduled just for September. Last year, 2017, 2018, the number of referrals for evaluations for students, there were 79 and 28 were accepted. And the year before, there were 57 and 19 were accepted. So between 19, we can expect, I would imagine, if the trend remains, we can expect, the year before was 20 entered the program. So we could be looking at anywhere from 19 to 30 special education students that will enter the program. And the nature of their disability and the placement in the particular classes will determine to what extent we have to create another classroom that's quickly responsible.
Now, just the real impact is staff, teacher and parent. Space, they'll juggle and find classroom space a year, but...
Would you talk about how we fund this if it comes to patterns?
Sure, though. It does have financial impact with those two pieces. And Gary has found where that would come from if necessary.
Right, we would be able to fund that from the, one of the revolving funds for non-resident tuition. We're receiving, or will receive, two students into the preschool from another district. They will each pay about $28,000. The school will pay for that, for the students. In addition, there's one high school student that will, that's paying $28,000, that is a special ed student. So together, you're looking at about $96,000 roughly, and that will fund one teacher and one paraprofessional. So that'd be coming from the revolving fund.
And Mr. Frisch has weekly meetings with Mr. Coster, the city auditor. This has already been discussed, and the auditor sees no issues with using that funding for that particular purpose. Moving on to teachers new to the district, as of the 17th, I don't think this has changed, so as of today actually, 21 new teachers are joining the district.
Sorry, I'm used to hop back to the enrollment numbers. I just want to point out, just been doing some math while everyone's been talking, and as we had discussed previously, based on how low these numbers are, it seems like if we get the issue with modulars coming offline, especially at Beeman, I don't see why Beeman couldn't drop to a two-class school and disperse that third class throughout the four remaining schools. That would be almost negligible as far as, none of those schools would be at capacity or near capacity if each classroom picked up. So if Beeman dropped one, there'd be nine classes to pick them up, so you figure that's, you know, three or four kids per grade per school.
Transportation.
I'm just trying, again, if the decision is repurchase modulars or find an extra bus to move this along, you know, Beeman's really the stress point where the majority of the modulars are and has to remain open for a decade plus. These numbers, as they seem to be holding steady, I mean, I frankly don't even know that you could, I mean, just put out there, budgetarily, not just as a great idea for other reasons, but budgetarily, if you took a school like East Gloucester, who has the lowest enrollment, and you have, and you closed it and took 44 fifth graders and dispersed them among 10 other classes, that's 4.4 kids per fifth grade class, and now we've closed an entire school, we're not paying, I mean, you know, I don't know that teacher count goes up in every school, it might stay the same, it might go from having a 17-student class to a 21-student class. Again, just if we really are in this budgetary crisis we're in, this is something to look at as numbers stay, if they stay in these low 200s, it seems to capacity a minimum to not redo modular Beeman by knocking it down to a two-class school, or maybe the maximum, close a small school early and get all that money back into the budget. Just putting that out there as we look at these numbers. Not something to be popular or easy by any means, but...
Well, it's something to keep in the back of our minds for next year. We certainly aren't going to try to do that tomorrow.
No, 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 I'm not saying too well, next of the February.
I have a question. As long as Principal Cook is here, does this number for freshmen, is that the number you were expecting or is it higher than you were?
It's a little higher than we're excited, you know, just estimating, you know, students going elsewhere and that kind of thing. It was a big, no, it's a bigger class, we've seen it coming, you know, for a while, but it seems fewer students have chosen other schools, so...
Okay, so do we, did any of the moves we did for our budget have implications on class sizes that are, I mean, are still within an acceptable range or are we stretched?
We are. Yeah, we're not seeing, we are seeing, as we discussed, some, you know, larger class sizes, but within, you know, what's acceptable, within class limits that we've established, we're not seeing first-in classes where we're having to eliminate the size limit. So, you know, we counselors are doing a good job of, you know, getting students into electives, you know, throughout the seven block schedule and that sort of thing to kind of spread, spread students through. So, yeah, we're able to accommodate the new students into the schedule. Just working on it right before I came over here, just getting things...
And we would like to present a report on that, but we would like to wait for the first couple of, three weeks of school because there's a lot of shifting around and that would be kind of a more official impact on the class sizes and the like. Teachers new to the district, there are 21 who are joining us, and you have the list here. Gloucester High School, there are two special education positions being filled, three at the O'Malley Innovation Middle School. Beeman's grades one and three, classroom teachers plus a special education position at East Gloucester, and one in grade three and one in grade four. At Plum Cove, grades two and four. At Veterans, kindergarten, two, I believe, one is out, one temporarily of absence or in return, if I'm not mistaken. Grades one and four, the English language learner position, and also the art position, which is shared with another school, but they do need to find that, or they have found, I'm sorry. West Parish, there are both grade two teachers have been replaced, and we just, just, just hired a district-wide speech and language pathologist who was a fellow at a particularly university, she is a fellow. And so, being such, ed-certified comes in with a very reasonable salary. There are, according to today's report, our seven power positions still need to be filled. With respect to the buildings, we met yesterday morning with the Department of Public Works on one of our bi-week meetings, the walkthroughs are done, the buildings are just about all set. Two more alarm tests need to be conducted, one at Gloucester High School, one at O'Malley. The Beeman doors and the Plum Cove front doors are done. The locks at Beeman and at East Gloucester, which was a concern for the Gloucester Teachers' Association, are done. There was a door at the cabinetry shop as well, that was one of the more important issues, and that has been replaced. There's all sorts of miscellaneous work still going on, this painting going on, the playground at Beeman, which the school committee was notified about, there were safety concerns, that is being looked at. Brush has been cleared at East Gloucester, and I believe at Veterans as well. The big issue, of course, is the air conditioning at O'Malley. It's a capital order in the neighborhood of around $200,000. There are mechanical elements that have to be replaced, but these mechanical elements were not on the original replacement list that took place a couple of years ago. The thing that's a problem is the chiller. The air conditioning system, apparently it's a split system, one half was replaced, one was not. They're waiting for the service tech to determine what can be gotten up and running with the other half of the AC. They've got HVAC people in there to see what they can do to keep the air moving. But these are special order parts, it's an old air conditioning system. With respect to the barrel, the chiller is something called a barrel where the coolant cycles through, and it's possible that the glycol water mix rotted with the baffles, and one of the questions that they're asking is whether it can be replaced with more modern material. So these are all up in the air, but it's not going to be fixed soon, and it's not going to be fixed in time for opening day. A letter went out today to staff, and I sent copies to you as well, that we will have opening day ceremonies with staff on Tuesday the 4th at the Gloucester High School.
Does the AC service classrooms or just...
Classroom stuff. It's the one school we have where the entire building is air-conditioned, and it needs to be air-conditioned because there are rooms without windows. We're going to take a look and see what we have to do for fans and ventilation to see if we can mitigate, and we also have to deal with the HVAC people have to say about the ability to at least move air throughout the building as well. If things stay like this, temperature-wise, we're in business. If it's, we have a hospital, that's going to be tough.
Anything else?
Is there a reveal?
I think that's it for school ratings and enrollment.
Okay. Okay. And last week, I appeared before the city council to request the action that we took two weeks ago. And they approved it in its entirety. So they approved the own left turn, no left turn into the school from Concord Street and no left turn out of the school from the access road. Do you have a name for that, the access road? You know, like, plus the old Johnson Road.
Travel.
Lefty, that's called lefty.
So anyways, they approved that. In the course of that discussion, I stated that we would be requesting of the police department help in enforcement of the no parking and the left turn only rules that have been approved. So what I would like to do with the, is take a vote to send a letter to the police department requesting that we get additional, or direct the superintendent to write a letter on behalf of the school committee to ask for additional enforcement, particularly in the opening days of the school. We also need to get to the D B W, the signage required, that they've agreed to do that. It's just a question of what, what it says.
I emailed a letter that I would like to send out to the West Parish community. I emailed it saying, I think you got a hard copy as well. And it has been reviewed by city council, by the police department, by the fire chief. And I sent a copy to D B W as well. The, the letter also not only emphasizes the no left turns in and the no left turns out, but also that live parking only, that parents, guardians, drivers must remain in vehicles. And the enforcement piece is to, if somebody's either making those turns and they, it's illegal now. Or if they're parking their car and they're leaving it, then hopefully the enforcement can prevent that from happening. The other piece in the letter has to do with school choice pickup option, which I think we spoke about before. But we will be inviting school choice parents. If they prefer, they can pick their child up at either Gloucester High School Park or at O'Malley Park. So we would arrange, we'd have to set forms, it'd have to be whatever we need to do formally. But the children would be upon dismissal, they, we'd have designated buses. One would go to G H S, one would go to O M. And just like the St. Anne's West Parish situation, the parents would be there to pick up their child upon departure from the school. The, the last piece, the city council asked me to add that, to remind everyone that drivers are not to pick up children and/or park on Essex Street. So that has been included in the letter as of today as well.
Essex Avenue.
I live there.
I know.
Essex Street's like...
Did anyone figure out just, how are, how's people going to know what, if you come from out of town, what early release day is, won't you have a...
Well, these things are, it's always coming from out of town.
It doesn't, it only, it doesn't affect people, it only affects people that are going to school. All of these rules only affect people that are going into the school.
So you're telling me if I'm going to want to go down Concord Street...
Doesn't affect you, does not affect you.
Going onto the property.
It only affects you if you're pulling into the school. So the assumption is that, that anybody who's picking up a kid or going into school knows where their early release dates are.
We need to clarify that, though, because I've gotten so many phone calls. I live right here, I'm going like, well...
It doesn't affect you.
The parents who live on Concord Street by the fire station are going to be upset because now they have to make a right turn and go on to one-twenty-eight, get off exit thirteen. They're asking us, they're asking us to do something.
But it doesn't affect anybody except people going into the school. If you're, if you're coming from Magnolia or someplace and want to go down Concord Street to get some corn, it does not affect you.
Right, and if you're coming from the fire department, you want to go up to Essex Avenue.
Does not affect you.
We backed away from the...
It does, does, there's no, it's only people turning into the school that it affects.
Earlier versions would have affected all traffic.
And what this will do is speed up the regress out of West Parish because you don't have people stopping traffic to make left turns with oncoming traffic. It's not, the flow just, just goes. And they'll get them out of there that much more quick with phone calls.
Are we having...
I think Dr. Sapphire said this off the cuff, will ask me, but I think it's good. He mentioned that this translates, or maybe it's something, someone said it's right in, right out. And that's a pretty easy mental thing to kind of remember. And so that might be something you want to include, you know, like the phrase be right in, right out, right in, right out. That might help people kind of remember what the rule is. I'm not saying it's going to be super effective, but what you said last time is still in my head tonight, so.
It's always good to be positive as opposed to no...
Right, right in, right out, yeah.
Are we having an extra crossing guard or anything over there?
Well, I have a question. Our intent was to get a crossing guard. The question is, where do you put them and why? If it says here, and people will still do it, that drivers are not to pick up their children and/or park on Essex Avenue, then, you know, where Concord Street and Essex Avenue meet, there's, there's no crosswalks. And across the street, there's no sidewalk. So what are they doing there?
The only issue would be kids that were walking down to its wellspring, they were crossing the top of Concord Street. Or conceivably, all of those kids that live up on, is it Locust? That goes up the hill?
Or Locust.
Down by the, by the cemetery, there's a street that goes up the hill.
On the other side?
On the other side, New Way Lake, excuse me.
Where he lives.
Locust.
So anyway, so those, those were the only walkers that, legitimate walkers. Would be kids that lived down Essex Avenue towards Wellspring. Or kids that have wanted to cross down, there is, there is a crosswalk there, correct?
This crosswalk quite New Way Lake?
Yes.
But that's ten to the wild down there.
As the superintendent, so the question is, where do you put them?
Don't we already have a crossing guard at the top of Concord? We used to.
Yeah, but we don't.
Okay, that's fine.
So besides asking the police to enforce the no parking, is there another oversight for that? In other words, if the police are there in the morning to prevent people parking? Yeah. So if the police don't come on a regular basis to prevent that happening, we're in the same situation we were...
So we write a letter...
These prices for the first few weeks, until the behavior changes, and then we'll see how it happens.
You know, at East Gloucester, it took a little while, but they, it works. I mean, they changed the rule, there's one way here, it's one way there, it's, they, you know...
I'm just, I'm just worried about the enforcement of no parking because we can talk to a blue on the face and nobody's doing anything about it. It's going to take one kid to buy a car, and we're all going to look at each other like, what happened?
Jurisdiction, somebody parks on Concord Street, we've got no jurisdiction to tell them.
But it's illegal.
Well, we're not our enforcement officers, no, nobody in the school is. So we write a letter, we direct the superintendent to write a letter requesting enforcement. And we see if it happens. If it doesn't happen, we write another letter, you know. Go visit the mayor and tell him. So, do we have, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to direct the superintendent to write a letter on behalf of the school committee to the, the police department, asking for assistance in enforcement of no parking and the right in, right out rules that have been passed by the city council.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, we'll do the best we can with availability we have, like in everything else.
That's all we're asking is for them to...
There's not a problem, I mean, you can just send them an email, there's no reason, I mean, you don't have to do it formally. I'm right here and sent an email, but if you feel better doing it formally, that's fine. But the fact is, we all know that when new streets and new designs go, like we did with Smith Street and St. Anne's back then, we're there as much as we can.
All I'm doing is, is trying to spread the responsibility of the school committee so it's not just the superintendent calling up, saying, hey, can you do this, that's all.
Yeah, that's why I haven't sent a letter from the school committee rather than the superintendent.
Well, that's what I said, have them draft a letter on behalf of the school.
Well, you are new.
You can write a letter.
Write another one.
All right. Okay. Is there any further discussion? I know we want to stay here all night. But we've beaten this one, yeah.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Subcommittee reports, Building and Finance Subcommittee Chairman Gross. Superintendent's report.
I can't believe you forgot to have one.
Superintendent's report first.
It's the pressure. I take that back. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, much of this is about the summer programs and the summer opportunities that our students and kids have had. We first begin with the special needs summer program. This is an annual program. Students who attend, it's built into their individualized educational plans. The hope is to keep them growing intellectually and socially, and also to prevent loss of things like literacy and reading and so on and so forth. So we had over a hundred students pre-K to twelve. This program historically has been at Veterans and remains there. We had eleven teachers, seventeen paraprofessionals, working with our students over the course of six weeks. In addition to the one hundred or so students that were involved in the entire program, there's also a summer tutoring program for one hundred and forty-two of our students as well. I think we should assign our appreciation for Julie Rowe, veteran special needs teacher. She has been the director of this program for six years now and has been doing a spectacular job. Moving toward, this is a lot of order. The, the new teacher academy for elementary teachers. Perhaps I'll ask Greg to talk a little bit about this, but we're going to have not only an orientation for our new teachers, but for our new elementary teachers, we're going to institute a new teacher academy program as well.
It starts next week on Tuesday. And it begins with a full day of literacy training. And that's for all new teachers of English arts as well as special educators. And we've also invited teachers who are substantially shifting a position if they were Title I teacher of literacy. And now they're teaching math this year. And they'll have a full day of that training as well. Teachers are, will be paid for these days from a grant. And our math coaches and literacy coaches will lead the training. So they've already, you know, they completed their agendas in late spring and have been working on putting together a really tight program of introduction to the curricular materials, the online resources, the district-wide expectations, and the best practices in classrooms. And this is typically what we would do throughout the first year of a new teacher's experience. They'll come out on a day for a release time, or they might get a training in the afternoon. And so it could take months to train in a, in a variety of these things. And instead, they'll be paid to come in in the summer before the school start, the school year starts. If this is successful, which I think it will be, we'll expand from elementary to hopefully to special educators across the entire district for next year. We can also consider some of the specialized teachers' speech and language, art, music, P E, to provide same kind of chance to, to train before the school year starts. So I'm looking forward to it. I'm grateful that all of our coaches are willing to plan and pitch in and teach during the summer. And I think it'll be a really good start for new teachers. Any questions?
Okay. A number of us just came before this meeting to count down to kindergarten. It's now probably in its fourth year at least. It has each year been very, very well attended. Parents of incoming kindergarteners have an opportunity in City Hall to go to different tables. Representatives, representatives from each of our elementary schools are there. Registration packets, if necessary, are available. Pens and pencils and all kinds of things are given away. Kathy Clancy is one of the folks that helps to organize and facilitate. The mayor was there, the school committee chair as well. A couple of kids get a chance to sit on a bus, probably the most popular of the young country kids, sitting on a bus. And, and a number of made their way over to the K B M museum where a play is shown. It's D W Goes to Kindergarten. It's a two-person play by the, the City Stage Company, and they do a great job each and every year. And it's just a very good way of welcoming and embracing both the kindergartners, the incoming graduating class of two thousand and thirty-one, and also their parents as well.
And they get to go to the library.
And they get to go to the library. Opening day for staff, we've already discussed that. But opening day for staff is Tuesday, September fourth. We will be having opening day at Gloucester High School. Coffee and whatever is served from seven o'clock to eight. And then we'll have an opportunity, a number of us, to address our staff and welcome them back. The, both the Gloucester Teachers Association and Paraprofessional Union have opportunities after that to meet. They then go to their respective schools where there are principal-led meetings. And then by afternoon, teachers in particular are in their rooms getting set, getting ready for the next day as well. Anything else going on that day? Okay, good. You have a listing, next item of upcoming open houses. Each of you is liaison to the various schools. This was sent out in a parent letter, wanted to make sure that the school committee had this information as well. The O'Malley distribution of Chromebooks is on September sixth, but the high school, I believe, is August the twenty-eighth. It's coming up, I did put that down. Last, the Department of Ed has sent out a number of resources to provide information for school committees, teachers, parents, et cetera. All of that information is available online, and it's also here in the packet. Most of the information is just a one-page. But some of the things that are there, I'm not going to go over now, but talking about the year ahead, the major developments that the Department of Ed is interested in. Educated development, strengthening standards, curriculum instruction and assessment, supporting social emotional learning. Processes for turning around lowest-performing districts and schools and enhancing resource allocation and data use. There's some information about back-to-school basics, a brief overview for parents and how the state and districts work together, looking at standards, curriculum instruction and testing. There's a timeline, the transition timeline for the grade-ten M-CAS. The grade-ten students this coming year will be taking the next generation M-CAS. But the scoring is going to be based upon traditional M-CAS levels, needs improvement, proficient exemplary, advanced and warning. There is also a primer on the new school and district accountability, which is the product of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, E S A, E S S A. The entire accountability system, for its part, is based upon two questions. How is the school doing? And what kind of support does the school need as well? Also this year with the accountability system, if a, one particular school is lower than all the other schools, it doesn't mean that the entire district automatically is given an accountability rating of the lower school. So if all schools are level one and one school's level two, that doesn't mean that that district's going to be a level-two school, district. And then last, I don't think I gave you a copy of this, but each year they publish a superintendent's checklist. A lot of the data that has to go in, the October enrollment reports, what information has to be sent down to parents. There's a whole list of eighty-six things that need to be done between September and June. And we try to follow that as closely as we can. So the other documents, however, are in this package, and are also available online. If you'd like the links, I can provide them for you.
Any customs of the superintendent? Do you have a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. And now, we will move on to Chairman Gross's report on the D N F meeting of...
D N F, so, Food Service is operating... So Food Service is operating in a deficit. And so we asked the Food Service Director, Michael Joe, to come in and talk about some ways to increase revenue and reduce costs. And some of the ideas that she brought in were vending machines at O'Malley, serving snacks and water, and staying at the high school. And then also all the cart snack programs at the elementary school. Vending machines also could provide breakfast at the high school. And they can be purchased with the Food Service cards, their food meal cards, as well as cash. She also discussed some trainings that need to be done to increase our participation. You know, customer service, some food flavor enhancements. And also do some periodic tastings to increase what the kids are interested in. Porch control, that was a major one that she felt they needed training in, how to interpret the differences between dry and liquid measurements and what those things mean. Some math education maybe for our kitchen staff. Particularly for the ordering, so they can get their orders correct, so that you have, you know, minimization of waste. Practice just-in-time cooking, instead of pre-comparative cooking, all the hamburgers at 10:00 a.m. and then serving them, but at just-in-time, so it's fresher and more enticing. Another thing she said that is at zero cost is have the principals come into the lunchroom, cafeteria. Every so often it was helpful. Do two things. The kids enjoy it, and the kitchen staff also feels a little bit more value through that. Look at the menus to see how they do.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're at a deficit for what reason? Are we overbuying? We're not getting paid? Where, I mean, what you're saying is actually, it doesn't make sense to me when we're in a deficit. What do you want to do to correct it? I mean, why are we at that point? Is it, you know, why are we watching? Or?
We've always functioned as a deficit.
I remember that you said this.
Well, it's never, that's not the issue. The issue is that because of the benefits that we have to pay to the employees, et cetera, the food service has never broken even. And it's always a goal that breaks even.
At least full-time people? All of them?
No.
Are we looking at now because of, because on the, go ahead.
The deficit's at seventeen thousand dollars. We have made personnel reductions back to the tune of twenty thousand dollars based upon the national standard, what's called meals per labor hour, which calculates for so many meals over such a period of time. These are the number of hours that you need for employees and stuff. And I believe that Michael Joe was able to reduce the number of hours by at least thirteen or so. In any case, the overall total for the course of the year is twenty thousand. So just on that alone, we have neutralized the debt. And then over and above that, there are some revenue-enhancing ideas, such as the vending machines. And there are certain efficiencies that she feels can be established in each of the kitchens as well. So those are the recommendations that she's.
Because also we've had to buy stoves. We've had to buy all the equipment out of this plant, too. So, you know, you take the whack of having to replace a freezer. Or, you know, we've had to replace stoves because of pilots.
Well, you, well, you're concerned that they won't measure the water. You know, if they're not equipped to cook, or because they don't know the measurements and you think that we're overdoing it, then you have someone going to train them.
Right, that's exactly what's being planned.
Okay. And because, I mean, you're paying someone to be prepared, or you're paying someone to work in the cafeteria. Now, it's her responsibility to make sure that whoever we hire, whoever's there, she should be training them.
Exactly. We are training them. Another thing is that the rate at which we pay your skill level is commensurate.
Well, because we also have different programs. We can talk, but we have to talk to, we have different programs throughout that the community could take advantage of people like SnapShep. Comes in and helps people, actually trained, and they've worked with Gloucester and Gloucester Fresh, and they're there, and they love to have kitchens, and do things like we work with Endicott. You have interns, you have culinary. I mean, there are a lot of things that we can take advantage of that wouldn't cost the city anything on either side.
Right, yeah. No, she recognized that, and I'm sure she'd be happy to speak to you about that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, so it's just there, it's a recognized issue. But like I said, we have to, the Food Service has to buy all their equipment, too. And that, we've taken some hits on that.
Seventeen thousand dollars, as it used to be.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And, well, the revenue, the bad debt has been dramatically reduced. So anyway, these are just some changes that you'll see with the, you know, the vending machines that are going completely under the school department control, not under any boosters or anything like that that used to be. And so she's going to look at installing these things because they've worked elsewhere. We also had, we also discussed an issue about the transportation drivers and the cost retirement system. If they work, they work twenty hours a week. The problem came up about vacation. Vacation in the contract says they get the equivalent of twenty hours. We're recognizing that as a one-week increment. The retirement board has not, this is really between the retirement board and the transportation department. It was discussed at this meeting, so. And if they take two weeks vacation, and they stretch out that payment into two different payments, it doesn't count, and it won't count as their full twenty-hour week in the thirty-six-week period. And so then they will no longer be eligible for health benefits through the GIC system and the retirement. So the union needs to, they need to figure out in their own internal system that this is what they need to, they need to define. Their twenty hours of vacation pay that we give them needs to be defined as a one-week. And that's, so that's where.
Well, yeah, no one in the city. Anyone nineteen or below does not get anything.
Right, yeah. They work, most of them work more than twenty hours a week. It's the vacation. The vacation is labeled. That's the minimum they work. They'll be a morning and an afternoon.
Because nobody on the city side, nineteen or below, do not get retirement, do not get vacation, do not get air.
Right, that's the same, yeah, that's the same. That's the same here, but they have, they work four hours every day.
And they don't get health insurance.
Right, but these people work four hours every day. They have to do their bus routes. So, but most of them work more because they have the in-between routes and then the after-school routes. So that's, that's what that was about, and it's really a union issue on us. We don't have, we're not bargaining this at all, right?
Well, I wouldn't say that. But it sounds to me that the retirement board is going to dictate how this turns out, and they're going to have to work with the union, and then the union's probably going to come to us if they don't like that conversation to try to help them, but I don't know how, I don't know what will happen at that point. But it can be, it can affect negotiations. It was discussed during negotiations. But we'll see what the retirement board is making the next step, if I'm not correct. Dr. Sappi? No, it's my understanding that the retirement board is going to make some sort of decision soon.
We're waiting for the, exactly right.
Before we do anything.
The retirement board to make a decision as to what they will acknowledge twenty hours for vacation means. Retroactively, they have, in order to protect some of the employees from losing their retirement and then consequently losing their health insurance due to through GIC, which must be in the retirement system, they're willing to retroactively look back and say, okay, this twenty hours is good for two weeks. Going forward, they're going to be making a decision as to what this twenty hours constitute with respect to covering the weekly twenty-hour-per-week requirement. And it's not where they can take the average over thirty-six weeks. The regulations, they were quite insistent, the regulations are that it has to be twenty hours each and every week during school year.
So stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
And then we have these, the letters that are, that we'll be looking at later, that the ordinance asks for, discussing them later.
We'll move on to the Personnel Subcommittee. Tech Sarah, print.
So it wasn't in the packet, but there's a job description that was emailed to each of you individually.
Section of our company.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
So this, I'm going to have Dr. Sappi speak to this a little bit, but just know that this is a new position. It's an administrative position. However, it's my understanding that the cost of this position is cost mutual to, I don't know, seven thousand more?
Seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand dollars more, but we get a lot more far. So I'm going to have you describe it, just because you, or James, because you have the video.
So I'll set it up, and then James has more to elaborate. We've talked a lot as the budget cuts, the budget for the assistant principal in high school. We've talked a lot about the vocational distribution of responsibilities. Well, obviously, there are other responsibilities in the building as well. Most notably, evaluation, scheduling, organization, the entire report process, and progress reports. So with the absence and the elimination of the assistant principal's position, our thinking is to take the guidance program leader position and to maintain all of those responsibilities, but to add to that position for certain administrative capacities, that that person would be certified, which means that they are eligible to evaluate their peers. And that we would be extending, based upon their per diem, we would extend extending their work days from one hundred ninety-three to two hundred and ten. And you can speak a little bit more about the nature of the job description and the kinds of responsibilities that this person would have. Again, over and above the existing guidance council program leader responsibilities that individual would have.
So the particular, some of the particular responsibilities that were part of the original conception of the assistant principal position would then be taken over by the coordinator for school counseling. So instead of, Desi's now saying, instead of calling them guidance counselors, they're school counselors. So I'm still getting used to, but that's the reason for the name of the position. So some of the responsibilities would entail more responsibility for scheduling. So more of the, so scheduling is a collaboration between, at this, we've been doing it, principal in collaboration with a data specialist for the district, and in consultation with the program leader of the guidance department, but that position would then have more responsibility for the scheduling. There's overseeing the attendance failures and restoration of attendance failures. It's part of the assistant principal's position. That is something that the guidance position would take over. The 504 plans for the district, something that the deans have done, for the school, rather. Overseeing the 504 plans for students is something that this position would oversee. And really, a lot of this work, preparation and policy writing and that sort of thing for a lot of the scheduling and sort of placing students, revising schedules, needs to take place over the summer. And so this would expand this guidance position to be able to address these problems over the summer. And really preempt a lot of the work that the counselors would, at this current juncture, are in need to do, either at the very end of the school year or the very beginning of the next school year. So those are a lot of the advantages. In addition to this position, having more expertise to directly supervise and evaluate the other counselors. Currently, that's worked the building principal. And so this person taking this position would have direct expertise to help with that oversight and the professional growth that would need to happen within the department. So that's another advantage to this position.
The savings on the budget cut, which we call approximately one hundred and four thousand dollars minus seven, is ninety-seven thousand dollars. Still saving to our budget, but we have, we create administrative position which can then compensate for a lot of the job responsibilities that have just been described.
So the Personnel Subcommittee met, which was Tony, Shell, and myself, and it was a recommendation from the Personnel Subcommittee to the full committee to accept this job description as presented tonight, nice and long. Second?
Is there any discussion, questions?
It's an awfully big job description. And I realize some of it is just putting all the school counselor duties because they're also doing some of that.
Exactly. It is a job responsibility, but a lot of those things are already being done by this position. And we're adding days that will allow other things to get done. And honestly, you know, as an administrative team, there are things we help each other with quite a bit. So many of those things are things that are also getting supported by the dean and getting supported by the building principal, because we all have a similar kind of list.
And add another evaluator, so you.
Absolutely, that's so helpful.
How many guidance counselors do we have down there?
We have four, four guidance counselors. So it's approximately two hundred per counselor, which is a reasonable rate, and well within what the accreditation board NEAS sets as, you know, the expectation.
So four counselors plus this person?
No, for, including this person.
Including this person, okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And we will go back to the agenda, and we will move on to our action items. And we have, coming out of, well, we have acceptance of three different grants here. The first one is Twenty-Fifth Century Learning Center Grant in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? There's detail on the grant in the packet. No? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The second grant is Early Childhood Two-Sixty-Two Grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars.
So moved. Second?
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. And then we have the Special Education Two-Cordy Grant in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? These are basically.
Just like, if you look at our budget, you'll see throughout the special education departments, salary lines, you'll see in several locations, the staff members that are funded by this Two-O-four grant. They're throughout, but they fund, fully fund decisions.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have three action items coming out of DNF. And they consist of letters to the city council as in accordance with the City Ordinance, Co-Ordinance, Chapter Eighteen, Section Eighteen, Act Twenty-Four, and the NAS General Order Forty-Three, Section Three, Four, which requires us to inform the city council of any capital needs that we feel we need for, to execute our mission of educating child.
All right.
You want to, it's your show.
It's my show. It's under the function as to improved or additional combinations. It's under the function as to improved or additional combinations. Schools, school, the school committee shall be the original judge of the expediency and necessity of adding additional or improved combination for any of the public schools within the corporate limits of the city, and whenever, in its opinion, a school building is required or material alterations needed, it shall forward a communication to the city council stating the locality and nature of the provision's desire. And that's it. So it's just basically letting the city council know that we have, you know, that there's a need or an issue or whatever, all this. These are just fulfilling that city ordinance.
And there are three of them, and the first one is in regard to this building or the preschool and the administration, and it's, you have a hard copy here, you want to talk about them?
Pretty clear, I mean, and we also got a copy of this report to the staff last year, so there is some.
Some of this work has been done.
The, these, these got photocopied, but they're folded over, so that's why the other floor, yeah, additional pieces are with it. So that was already done, but this is just because we overcall on this, so we're sending along now, far ahead.
Okay. So the letters before you, is there any discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the study for the city council?
So.
Standing.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The second letter is in regard to the fieldhouse floor. And as we know, the fieldhouse floor is not, Jim, the track in the fieldhouse has not been able to be used the last four years, and it needs to be repaired. Are there a motion?
So.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the, the third one is in regard to all of the modules, saying basically that they are aging out and that they, we need to consider, you know, what we're going to do to replace those. So are there a motion?
So.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Massachusetts School Building Authority update. The day after our last meeting, the building committee met, we mostly were introduced to the new, the new OPM, as well as those, the representatives going through the process of picking, of developing an RFS for the designer, which we then spent the rest of the meeting talking about. The, the only thing that, physical thing that came out of that meeting, other than work on the RFS, was that we voted to eliminate the Harrison Avenue site as a possibility. The, since then, the, the purchasing agent has, has come back and met with the OPM, as well as myself and, and Dr. Sapphire, and we refined the RFS, and it is ready to go out to MSBA, where they have to look at it before it's actually posted on the, for review or for.
I have an email dated yesterday at 5:49 PM from Catherine Ridley, who is with the owner's project manager of company C-B-R-E hearing. Please see attached final draft. Thanks to all your time and effort in helping it get finalized, unless there are any further comments, we will submit it to MSBA tomorrow afternoon, which is this afternoon, so presumably it's on.
So the process is that it goes to MSBA, they have it for a period of time, the days in front of me, and then it gets posted on the register, I think they have it for two weeks. Then it gets posted, sent to the register on Wednesday or Thursday to be posted the next Monday, and then it's advertised for two weeks. And then we get responses. The building committee gets to review the responses, but they do not get to pick who they are. They get to basically indicate their preferences, and that would be, there would be three representatives that go to MSBA and sit on the design review committee, which is a standing committee that has 12 members. So the three members from Gloucester would increase it to 15 members. And at that point, they actually do the interviews. And the, the three members from Gloucester will bring the message of what the building committee's preference is, which I've been told by our OPM is weighed heavily, is taken into consideration very heavily. So we will probably plan a site visit to some buildings that have been presented, like we did when we went to West Parish, we went down to Denham, Denham, I forget those two names, and, and visited the school there. So those are all scheduled. We'll also be doing a walkthrough of the existing buildings for the potential candidates for the, for the architectural design service on the 11th of September, I believe. But essentially, when you add this all up, we hope to have a designer onboard by the middle of October. And anything else? Any other in the business?
I learned yesterday that the custodian schedules have changed, therefore, there are, at times, food service workers that are in the buildings alone by themselves. So I think it was new to us to hear that those schedules had changed, and I see a concern in someone being in a school all by themselves early in the morning, you know, just like some sort of report, either from the superintendent or send it to building and finance or something to find out when this happened, how it happened, and should we have food service workers in the buildings all by themselves in the morning at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, or is there a remedy for that?
Maybe we should also go, even though the schedule changed, has it always been this way?
It's new, schedule's new.
No, I, I know there's been a shift of like a, a little bit, but I'm just curious, some of them sounded like they came in much earlier, so I don't know, maybe it's been a long standard.
Is the question that the cafeteria workers are coming in earlier or the, or the, custodians coming in later?
So we were told that the food service hours have not changed and the custodian hours have changed.
Okay.
That they're coming in half hour later in some schools and maybe even more different in others.
What we can find out.
Going back to what I mentioned earlier, and based on the letter we just saw, so 18 went in, says vets in youth classroom, women in need of three, so the 15 modules that treat Plum Cove and Beeman?
I believe it's six and nine, yes.
Which one has six and nine?
Plum Cove has six, Beeman is nine.
Okay, oh geez, okay, so I guess what I'd like to, two of them, two of them at Beeman were put in West Parish. So what I'd like to have explored and presented to us is the cost savings on not replacing any Beeman modulars and, you know, under the premise you can reduce Beeman down to two classrooms and, versus closing Plum Cove entirely but replacing Beeman modules, keep it at a three. I'm interested here what the price tag is on both those scenarios. Again, I know they're not going to be popular or easy decisions to make, but they would have an obligation to look to see if there's substantial savings by doing one or the other, either not replacing modulars at Beeman or closing Plum Cove but replacing modules at Beeman.
Okay, well, I think the numbers that you were talking about earlier was eliminating one grade, one class of, not two.
One, well, one of the Beeman's is the.
So I mean, there's two different things there, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, no, but the math still works, if you close Plum Cove and had distributed 212 students, you still could be.
Well, I'm just saying, if you, if you, if you eliminate, if you drop Beeman to a two-class-per-grade school, you're only losing one class in the district. If you close Plum Cove, you're losing two, that's all, that's the only thing, that's all I'm saying.
That's absolutely true.
Yeah.
So, but I think both of me, again, numbers only.
I think that when you want to look at Joel, it's backwards.
Okay.
I think you need to look at the educational impact before you start the financial side.
Right.
I don't like to have it both.
Well, because if the, the financial side's not going to tell you whether or not it should be done, the educational part will tell you whether or not you should even do the financial part.
So, but again, I think that, you know.
So you can, you can burn all the energy you want going into directors, but you can go in one that's going to be definitive.
So we are.
For efficiency.
We are a representative board of tax payers, and we need to, I'm waiting for them, it'll be up to the students, and so it's important to figure out monetarily what the impact.
We have an educational.
So, so the, the solution is that we prefer, we refer to program to look at what the educational impact would be of reducing a grade.
We did that already.
You already did that.
And there's no interest.
It hasn't ever.
We did it last year.
We did it last year.
Didn't we discuss this earlier?
Well, I know.
Refer to that program.
Yeah. And then we, then we refer to DNF, the.
So we'll refer it again.
The.
But I think, you know, the educational impact first.
Okay.
That's, that's my point, because the financial impact will not tell you anything about its educational impact, the educational impact will tell you whether or not it's worth it.
What school are you talking about?
What school?
Yeah, there was no custodian.
Oh, Plum Cove was one.
Some of the smaller schools in the summer, because I just.
East Park.
They do change. Some of the smaller schools in the summer, they do change because they float.
Those are far.
But in the fall, they didn't, no.
They didn't?
No.
That's good to know.
It all depends what building, for most parts, don't change just in the summer.
Okay.
I would just like to know the numbers.
The numbers are easy to find.
Right, so the easy, let the information, yeah. I'm not saying you wouldn't take into that, they're a good point, maybe prioritize that they're a good point, but the numbers are, if the numbers are easy to get, let's get the numbers.
Well, let's get them afterwards, though.
What's the fear of information?
People are already worked.
You don't want to stop saying.
Why are you just piling more on when it may not even be necessary? We may even reject the idea, we don't know.
Educationally sound programs will be.
Again, educationally sound, financially responsible.
Exactly. Educationally sound first, and then you do the financially responsible.
I don't think you can judge.
Because you know.
I don't think you can balance those things.
Only someone without a brain wouldn't know that there would be cost savings.
We don't have German anymore, that's not educationally sound, but it's financially responsible.
Can we just refer to both program and finance again, and we'll have the same conversation all over again?
This is, like I said, this is, this is off far enough in the future that we can spend some time looking at it.
Right. Have both conversations and then.
Is there any further, you know, issues?
All the other schools have been open at 7:00 AM for like 15 years.
We have a motion for.
Washington. We have five guys over there.
You have an important issue.
Thank you for so much of your answers.
Okay, we've got an important issue coming from the administration.
Our K-8 literacy coordinator has taken a position in the district.
Our what?
Literacy, K-3 literacy coordinator. And there are obviously, like with any job, there are a number of responsibilities. Search committees have looked for viable replacement candidates, they have come up unsuccessfully. This has been a historical pattern, in fact, for this particular position. So we are now looking at a theoretical reallocation of many of the job responsibilities involved in literacy, reading, ELL, and Title I in particular, and Greg can give you some of the specifics.
So this is all late breaking news, we just, just finished interviews on Monday night, and so, and then had another day to deliberate, so it really was on yesterday afternoon, so I didn't have time to put on the agenda of proposed redistribution, so I'm not sure what that procedure is, but I'd like to at least share with you the thinking, if that's okay, and then you can perhaps suggest if we need to discuss further or if it's.
I think this has to be on the agenda to discuss, I think we should do it on our next little meeting.
It's, okay.
Especially if you're asking us to deliberate on something.
I'm, I'm bringing it up to ask if you, if you would like to have a more thorough report. I'm concerned about the start of school coming, that's why I'm ready up tonight, but if you want to wait, we'll wait.
This is just, this is something that just happened, I don't, you know, it can be.
But do you need action from us to do anything, or can you just do it?
Well, let's see, if he's asking for action, if he's going to ask.
He did, he said that, he was.
I'm checking to see if you require action, because I'm not sure if.
So what, what we haven't heard is, is what you're suggesting the solution is.
We can boil it down very quickly.
Okay, what is the solution? You can't hire somebody, what are you, what are you looking at?
We have a single position right now of roughly $100,000 for the K-8 ELA program. In interviews, it was clear that the different needs of the elementary school, having had five to seven years of work with BSRI, and reading coaches in place, are a very different place than the middle school. Middle school needs what the elementary schools have had for them, which is a direct coach in, in the classrooms. We also, our ELL program coordinator also very recently informed us that she's not going to continue in that role, so that's an additional piece that just happened that was outside of this position. We are going into the school year without a Title I director, we're going into the school year without an ELL coordinator, we're going into the school year without somebody to facilitate the reading coaches at the elementary level, and no one to work with the middle school ELA program. Data meetings start in about two weeks, our data collection starts in about two weeks. Initial decisions for ELL placement start in a couple of weeks, and this is why I'm, I'm asking your advice, frankly. I think that as a way of getting through this year, we could split those, what I've just described into these five components, and provide, and these will be one-year stipends for existing personnel, and so for example, the literacy coaches have a very strong group, the literacy coaches, I could expand their hours to do some planning and professional development and, and collaboration, and so for example, five to $7,000, they could meet twice a month for X amount of hours to do what they have learned to do quite well on their own, but need additional time that a facilitator, a program leader would have done. So that's one example of, of a piece. A Title I teacher who's in place right now could assist with those things where we need immediate Title I help, so we could create a, a program leader stipend for the year, these are one-year kinds of things. We have some veteran teachers in place who are Title I, who, who know most of the ropes and could assist me in getting things going right in, in September and October. We have ELA teachers at the middle school, and there is no ELA program leader, even though we have a science program leader and a math program leader, we have no, no ELA program leader. That's something that could be put into place fairly quickly, and that person could assist with those beginning-of-the-year data collection pieces. So there are three of the five components where we have teachers in place. I'm not saying this is a great solution for long term, it's, would be far better to have one point of contact to work with, but we have less than two weeks till the school starts. We have a recent notice from somebody that they're, that moved on, are moving on, and so I'm trying to find a solution quickly. And so I'm trying to find a solution quickly that doesn't lock us into long-term decision, but uses our existing personnel to fill some of those holes. I think that we would then post for a half-time literacy coach at the middle school, much like we've had a coach at each of the elementary schools who works with BSRI now momentum. We don't have anything like that at the middle school. We should have something for that partnership. When I combine those pieces together, the net cost is $10,000 to $15,000 below what we would spend on a full-time person. So we're not saying about a, a negative budget impact. I'm not convinced that it's a long-term solution, but I do think it's a solution that doesn't upset too much and, and doesn't cost any more, and we can utilize some of the existing personnel. So that's, in a nutshell, and my, what my question is, because this doesn't come up very often, is what is the next step? And how would you like to proceed?
So what you're asking for is permission from the school committee to reallocate funds from a, a position that we can't fill to distribute that in sort of piecemeal, but it's not the right word, but to fulfill all the duties of that position.
Isn't that just a transfer?
It is, that's why.
It is. And I don't recall us giving permission when we couldn't find a speech, a speech in. Would we have to use the outside person for a long? Correct. Did we have to use some outside consultant for a long time?
We just want, if, if the school committee has heard and we can go about our business as an operational element, we just want the school committee to know that this is something that we feel should be done at this point in time. At a minimum, it's an FYI so that you, that you know that this is what we're looking to do, so that we can get these positions filled and get to work.
The salary in the budget is 89 grand.
Plus Title I grand, $11,000. So she was actually getting about $100,000. This would cost, but the figure out would be about $84,000.
Oh, that would have been in this bed.
No, no. Title I.
Why wasn't it in, it should have been in.
It's a grand.
I know, but we, but we, they usually get no J. I look for that. Where was the ELL coordinator located?
That is in regular budget.
Is it? That turns, okay, I was looking, I was looking at Beaman. I just think we should have reported DNF on, you know, just rather than bury the transfer.
When you figure it all out, just give us a report. I don't think this rises to the level. You've got a job to do and our job is to help you get that job done and as opposed to preventing you from doing.
I just didn't want to often do something without providing our casket and courtesy information.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
As usual, we have a committee.
Do we have a motion, please?
Some more. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.